Good evening, folks. Our Club of Lummester Planning Board together, December 18th, 2017. We have a 6:30 public hearing. Public hearing for City Council Petition 14-18. John P. Bolger and 10 registered voters rezone the following parcels on Pleasant Street and Low Street from Residence B to Residence A. Map, 342 lots 12 and 13. Map, 481 lots 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Map, 521 lot 1 and 39. Map, 488 lots 1, 5, 6, 7, 8. Map, 494 lots 18, 3A, 3-1A, 3-2A, 3-2B, and 3-2C. Pleasant Street, East Side. Map, 561 lots 35A, 36A, 37A. Map, 340 lots 1 and 2. Map, 410 lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 22 and 23. Map, 496 lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6A and 7. Map, 481 lot 16. Low Street, map 488 lot 5. Do I have someone here representing this group? Or these interested parties?
Myself and Dorothy Rulo.
Please stand and be recognized.
All right.
The name please?
John Bolger, 365 Pleasant Street.
Okay.
Dorothy Rulo, 54 Low Street.
Continue.
There has been, well, a little bit of history to it. The intent of what we're trying to do is to protect the portion of Pleasant Street. There was some building that went on this spring and summer which really doesn't go with the neighborhood at all. And we're afraid that that could happen again. There has been some builders that have been approaching people to possibly buy numbers of properties and perhaps put up condo complexes, whatever. So we're trying to protect that. It was our main intent, especially where it goes to Sholen Farms. You know, a lot of people go there. You know, big condominium, high-rise complexes, we don't feel belongs in that area. There has been, was a gentleman down at the corner of, I'm trying to think of his name.
David Franchosi.
David Franchosi had, I guess, purchased a piece of property and had permits, I believe, to put up a duplex. He has since bought the next property up. And we've talked to him. He wants to, I guess, his plan is to put in three single-family homes. So he needs an extra piece of land to be able to do that. He's very in tune with the neighborhood, which we respect. So what we did is we did a couple revisions to this petition to remove a few lots that would give him relief since he's kind of in tune with what's going on in the neighborhood. Those didn't appear on your copy. Talking with the people at the City Council, I guess we're not legally equipped to revise a petition when it comes to zoning. It only can be done by the City Council from what we hear. So that's where we're at.
We will only make, we make a recommendation to the City Council.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we have to have the hearing. But what we give is a recommendation to the City Council. They're the ones that actually act on it and make the changes.
Okay, okay. That sounds like a plan. But that's basically our intent, less, there's a few lots that are, you know, got to be removed on it, which I'm going to get together with John Dobrowski at some point in time to kind of rework the details of it. But that's basically our intent, to, you know, try to keep things the same. We do have, I haven't gone through to match the names up with the lot. But I would say there's at least 75% of the property owners that are involved in that area have signed on to the petition, you know, realizing that, they think grandfathered in for the most part, but they'd also be non-conforming lots after that. So pretty much everybody wants it to stay the same. So that's where we're at.
This up on the wall.
How long is that?
They can live in?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. I looked at that. Okay, Residential B, residential A.
Square footage, different sept acts.
Okay, A is single family.
Yeah, no multi-family.
So where is the, where is the zone line? Is the purple line?
It's the purple line, yeah.
The purple line today.
So on the left is Residence A.
This is A?
Yeah. It's the RA currently, and this is RB.
Right, all the way to, actually, all the way to Union.
So where those buildings are.
From that point.
All these red hash ones that aren't listed.
I mean, not on your petition, but.
RB.
What, what?
RB, yes.
Yes. It's all, it's all the same.
Right.
Yeah, all the way to Union Street, same thing up to about Manchester Street or Tisdale Street.
Right, right. Our concern was the lots, actually, that are.
On Pleasant. Understood.
And one on Low.
But are they open on the curb, like lots there? Or they're as a house?
No.
So this, is this the proposed zone line? Or is this the current?
The purple is the current.
The purple is the current line. The proposed is the, the outline of the different lots.
Effectively move it back over here.
Right.
Like this.
So the frontage on Pleasant Street.
So all of these lots would be RA instead of the RB.
But we have refined it. We have refined it in consideration to that man that is building, and it comes much further off.
Where is he in regards to this map?
He's on the corner of Chestnut and Pleasant.
So he's on the corner. He's not surrounded on both sides by, by what you're proposing. He's on the end.
Well, that piece up there on Chestnut.
That's going to be spot zoning.
Now, that going up Chestnut, that should be included. And you don't have it included.
Okay, he's on.
Where is his lot you're talking about?
Okay, the A, all right.
What's the address, this one here? 233 Pleasant?
I think it's 233.
Okay, that would be this lot here.
Okay, yeah. And then.
And then which ones is, did he buy?
No, this line is going to be moved.
The next one is going up Pleasant.
Just one more lot.
I believe so. I have 233, yes, 233 and 232.
So across the street.
And 232 is this one, right?
To make it even, I'm trying to think what the other one is. Okay. First one, I'm on the spot, I can't think.
No, no, it's okay. You know what, I'm just, I'm just trying to avoid. You know, if it's stagnant in between lots and you're trying to make RA, then, you know, you can't just jump lots, you know? It has to be contiguous.
Like you move it up like evenly across Pleasant Street the best we could and also accommodate him where he's going to put up single families.
That's why we refined it, so that we wouldn't be jumping lots. It would be all one single contiguous.
Right, and that's what it needs to be.
Right.
So this isn't an updated reflection of that, though?
I don't think so.
No, no.
No.
Mr. Chaconi, I think you were probably on the, on the planning board when we came down in 2004 about this particular area.
Yes.
That now we have construction that is, does not belong in a single-family neighborhood.
I know.
And what we need to do is try and protect somewhat where we live.
They're talking about this one.
That's right.
Unfortunately, that one looked a lot better on paper than.
I'm sure.
No, but I do remember.
Because I drive by and go.
And I know the area very well. I know the area.
Yeah. That looked better on paper.
Oh, I'm sure.
We approved it, so.
But I came before this planning board when they were doing the ordinance too.
That's right.
And came with a chart saying how, just that one spot to change it to an A. And I don't know what happened to that.
I think it was because everything, because on both sides of it, it was different zoning. So it would have been spot zoning, was that?
Yeah, probably.
Any part of it?
No, it all came down from a residential joint. It was all contiguous.
I remember, I remember you coming before us.
I mean, not for nothing, but.
It got turned over.
That is the only lot that's there that was empty and they built on it. The others really aren't, so I don't know.
Right, well, they're not empty, there's.
Well, there's homes on them, so normally they, they don't tear a home down to build a condo.
No, they're not talking.
They're not big enough. Each one of them are bigger than the. I mean, there are, see, I think our fear is we never thought would happen, what did happen.
Right.
And the other thing is, some of those properties do have a lot of land in the back.
Correct.
But they have no frontage, so. Right, but, you know.
They have a lot of frontage.
But if you tore down a house, Tom, and you said, I got four units going in, it could certainly make up, you know, for the difference that you would lose, you know?
Right.
Especially that big lot in the back there.
Yeah.
Well, that's a lot for Coburn too, that's lots, right?
Some of it is, yeah.
Some of them are swampy.
And again, you know, you know, this isn't our expertise by any means. That's you guys, and we appreciate what you do, certainly. And any suggestions or whatever, you know, it's not like it has to be this way or we're not going to play. But we're just trying to figure out a way to protect that area. One person from the City Council suggested that we only did do one side of Pleasant Street. Well, that's, you know, you're going to be looking out of your left hand and go and see a disaster, and the right hand will be okay, you know? So that wouldn't be acceptable. Somebody else has suggested to change the ordinances for Zone B to restrict it more. But then that would go completely citywide and, you know.
That's a much tougher.
In some places, it's okay.
Right, you know, some places that is where it belongs. So it's like, okay, now what do we do?
Yeah, you really want to change the definition.
Exactly.
Well, they don't want, you know, it's a City Council petition, so they're not, and you're working with John Dobrowski to update everything, right?
Right, right. To try to refine it a little bit, you know?
So probably the best, I mean, I would think the best way to do it is come back with that revision so that we can make it educated.
Well, how much are you changing on the revision?
Okay, well, so far.
Quite a bit.
No.
Because it looks like the petition.
I just wrote it down.
You're changing one thing.
Just changing one thing, yeah, that's all.
Yeah, it's basically just.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
On both sides of Pleasant as it nears the corner by Chestnut.
Near Chestnut, yeah.
Do you know where Steven Pellegrini lives? Pellegrini?
I, no, I can't say that I do. But if he came up from the corner of Chestnut, how far up is Pellegrini? Is he right on the corner?
Probably like three houses up.
Three houses up?
Yeah.
Because this other gentleman, what's his name, Franchosi?
Yes, he bought Lloyd Harris's property in addition to his.
Can you come up and show us? Find out?
I think.
Oh, it doesn't have names on it?
Do you know what the address is?
He might be able to recognize. He might be able to just read the names.
Oh, the names are on?
I can't read from here.
Okay, this is his now.
Right, that's the empty lot.
Yeah. Okay, and what he had, we've been up to his house to talk to him.
And he's got room to put three single-family homes.
I think he can put, what he told us, he could put two duplexes there, one facing Chestnut and one facing Pleasant. Are they connected, I think?
But if.
But what he wants to do, he's, he has just within the last probably week and a half purchased this property. And he wants to use part of this property to add to this so he could put in three single families and then keep that one there as a single family.
You'll have to reconfigure that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, you know, but that would, you know, we kind of took that out in respect to him because it's still going to be single-family homes, which would kind of go with everything else.
Dobrowski, yeah.
No, if you took it out, you can't.
That's spot zoning.
Well, he could put. No, 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 no. He could put single families in Residence B if he wanted.
Single families, yeah. So he wants to go to Residence A. But he's putting in single families?
No, he's going to stay Residence B.
He wants to stay A?
Right, I think it's because of the.
He wants to stay Residence B?
Right, because of.
The frontage and the sept acts and the lot size.
Right, you can have, Residence B, you can have five units in an acre.
Oh, okay, so that's probably the concentration.
Okay, and but there's, there's requirements for parking and things like that and frontage.
Okay, I'm not sure. He did tell me the details, but that's.
That's correct.
Escaped my mind.
So you would say that, Tommy, right behind you, right? So take those two lots, so the new line would be right there.
It would be like, like this.
And what about the other side, same thing?
Same thing.
Because those houses on the corner are all multifamilies.
Yeah, but we came further up, John. We came up because we went to Steven Pellegrini's.
I mean, really, on this whole map that I see, the only property that would actually be an issue would probably be this one. And this is, this is pretty wet in here, isn't it?
We didn't go that far.
Yeah, we didn't go that far. But I mean, really, I mean, who's going to, nobody's going to buy this and turn, you know, and try to put condos and they're going to rip a house down.
Yes, they probably could.
Well, they could, but that really, we don't see that. It doesn't happen. It's a whole burnt town, maybe. One lady we talked to, what number is that?
Little two on the bathroom.
I think it might be this one. And she bought it, her husband bought it, and they were second in line because someone was going to buy it and put multiple housing in the back.
Because they certainly are the Residence Bs. You can tear one of those down and put four units and a five units in if you had.
Oh, yeah, there's a couple of those in there that you could.
I know there's a hill there. I mean, there's a big slope there. There'd have to be a lot of cut and fill.
Yeah, these ones here have a lot in the back. And then these two.
Those are uphill.
Yeah. This one here, that's, yeah, yeah. Oh, well, a couple of those are, you know, parcels.
Yeah, because those are big parcels on the left-hand side.
Yeah. So really, oh, this is a continuation of, you know, RA down to, you know, take off the two on the left-hand corner on the left-hand side of the street.
That was your house? Your house is a little further.
Like up, up here, like up in here somewhere.
But there's more than two.
There's more than two?
That we've taken off, that we refined.
Oh, okay, so where would the others be, do you know? Do you have any idea?
I think it might have come up a little further. But then again, you know, you guys know that better than us.
Yeah, see, what you got to be careful with here is you can't be jumping. So, you know, you want a line to be down to those. And then all of a sudden, you know, you got two lots that go Residence A, and then all of a sudden you want, you want to keep on Residence B because it's not powerful.
Well, at least the intent was, I don't know whether it actually figured out that way on the map. I have like a cryptic map. But what we're trying to do was, was because these two, he wanted to stay Residence B. So we were trying to make it even across.
Right.
You know, so, so as you're going up Pleasant Street, there'd be a line going across that, you know, it would.
So you take the Commodore off on the other side of the road and you get rid of the parcel in the back.
Right, right.
And that's what John, you know.
Yeah, he came first.
John can help you with that, you know?
Yeah.
And that would make a lot more sense, too, because that parcel in the back that, you know, you can access from Coburn Street as well. Well, Coburn Street, is Coburn Street, that's RB. Manchester Street's RB.
RB, that's RB.
Tisdale Street's RB, all the way to Union. It changes on the other side or past Tisdale.
Right.
In fact, that big lot, there was a gentleman that came in here, I'm going to say.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
10 years ago, that was going to try to develop that. And we couldn't, he couldn't get the frontage. And to do that, because the, the wetland sits back there.
Right.
It was really, it was really restricted to that. There wasn't, there was a substantial effort to do something. It turned out it just wasn't practical.
I mean, you know, you can kind of go on and on forever.
But that'd be RB anyway.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, you know, I'd like to protect everything. But, you know, the main concern is like, you know, Pleasant, especially going up to Sholen Farms, everybody goes up there and it's like, you know.
Yeah, that's quite a way out, so.
Right, right. But I mean, it's the route going up, you know?
It's also a very historical area with the beginning of the coal manufacturer, Lummester.
That's right.
And if you look at where they put these things, there's a wonderful old house that was part of the coal manufacturing right in front of it. And the little house is adorable. And then you have these monstrosities in the back of it.
Yeah, well.
Because that was all, you know, the beginning of ones right up to that corner, past Chestnut.
So we, we got to wait till they.
Yeah, you know, let's, let's see how John reconfigies it.
Okay, sure.
You know, one of my suggestions would be get rid of the parcel that abuts Coburn and do make it even line across.
They'll eliminate.
And everything else is contiguous because then we don't run into, you know, we can't spot zone.
Right, I think the only thing that would be to be like a little jog like here, you know, like this would be a little, you know, because we didn't want to, because like.
No, you can't do that.
Oh, so it'd have to come like from here?
No, you'd have to come almost straight across. See, if you want to save those two lots in the residential A.
Oh, straight across here?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm talking about like here, like, okay, this is A and this is B.
That's going to have to stay B, that side of Pleasant Street.
Right. Oh, I see what you're saying, like the whole thing?
No, no, just up in that section.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's fine.
Because what happens, you can't, you can't do what we call spot zone. Have one here and then B and then another one. You can't do that.
Exactly.
So you can do it, if you had that line, all of a sudden that, that A line went over and.
And there was a street.
Went across there, went up. Yeah, you could, you could include that. But see, as you get close to the city, that's where we want the multifamilies.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And that's where our planning is, okay? So as you go up in that area, that's, that's really, doesn't match good zoning, you know, good planning.
And it wouldn't affect you guys on the street either. Okay, you think about it?
I'm saying on the other side of Chestnut Street.
Oh, exactly. Oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, and going up that way.
Yeah, we didn't want to affect any of that.
Right.
Oh, it comes to about here and down.
Oh, you said those lots are up top, further up to your right. Going to the top.
I've got, I've got the, the material in the car if you'd be, I could go up and.
I think, you know, I just think.
I think we're going to wait.
If you're going to. Talk to John and see what makes sense with them. And to make this a nice, easy process or, you know, something that makes sense and we don't have to worry about spot zoning anywhere and everybody's on board from a certain point forward, you know, that Coburn piece in between, I would knock that off. I don't know how far down the corner you're going, but if you cut across from the two lots you just said you wanted to keep RB, you know, that might be your simplest solution, to get rid of all the rest. Because then you don't, you're not jumping around. Everything's contiguous and it protects that whole front piece after the corner.
Because you're really concerned more up on this.
Exactly.
The southern end down here.
Oh, no, exactly. But they'd all be grandfathered, you know? They'd all be grandfathered anyway, you know?
I was told the other day at the council meeting that a man was sitting next to me who was, signed our petition. As a matter of fact, we had four pages on that petition, not just 10 registered votes. And he said, what, what was that man up on those two? He said, when you, when a dog is allowed to come into a neighborhood and do what he wants to in the neighborhood, other dogs come and do the same thing. And that's what we're afraid of. We're afraid of bringing other construction that will influence our neighborhood. And I appreciate your looking at this.
Yeah, no, I think that if you're coming in here, you tell us we're going to revise it. So we can't really recommend until we have facts. So I, I think what we'll do is we would probably continue this.
Yeah, we'll continue.
We continue this and then the notice to the City Council would be that we'd, we'd like to, you know, whatever, updated drawings.
See, I knew that, you know, that there was going to be revisions, but I figured it'd be good if we came down here.
No, it is.
Just to say, this is our intent.
Absolutely.
We kind of screwed up on this part because we don't know what we're doing.
You didn't screw it up.
No, 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 you're doing fine. Don't worry about it.
This is where you need the input, you know, to say what makes sense and what doesn't. And that's what I think John's going to help you with as well.
Okay.
Because it's got to be passed at the City Council, you know? We're just a recommendation. But if, but if everything makes sense, it is a, I agree, it would be a real nice thing.
Should we table this until January?
Well, we can't, we'll table, we're at the hearing, yeah, so we'll continue.
We'll just continue.
Right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. We know how much work it's been.
And have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Okay, I make a motion to continue this until we have further information from the City Council on a revised, revised plan.
Okay, motion made to continue until we have further information from the City Council. A favor, say aye.
Aye.
Want to say aye? Motion carries. Regular meeting.
I'll keep running. Okay, yeah, no question.
Thank you.
Patrick Perez. Fred Fredrick. Paul Waster. Salazar Chaconi.
Yeah.
John.
Wait until.
I don't care.
Minutes of previous meeting.
I have the meet, the meeting minutes downstairs and they're ready, but we didn't print them out and we ran them out. We'll have them at the next meeting.
Okay. Minutes will be continued to next meeting. Plan submitted. Site plan approval for 620 Pierce Street. Ground mounted radar, uh, ground mounted solar.
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 Ground mounted solar, so this is a residential ground-mounted solar special permit and site plan application. So we would schedule this for our public hearing and open public meeting.
Okay.
For the eighth. We have, we have three weeks before then, so we have time for advertising and.
Do they need a special permit, too?
They do.
Yes, they do. The ordinance on residential.
Yeah, it's our first test. We have, we currently have one already scheduled for Seven Prospect Street, but I'm going to be, they need to reschedule that for the following meeting, so I don't know if that leaves that slot open for this purpose or.
So if it's open, let's do 630.
Otherwise, we have to wait.
Well, it's, it's.
Well, we would do.
It's not open yet, right?
No, nope.
So 635.
So 631.
631.
Can't schedule both at the same time.
All right, so moved, 631, second.
Motion made and seconded.
So that would be the.
First one.
The site plan approval.
Site plan approval. Okay. I have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hear none, a call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say no, motion carries. Special permit approval for 620 Pierce Street. Ground mounted, mounted solar.
Solar, 632. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded for January 8th at 632. Any discussion? Hear none, a call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. 712 Main Street, E and R.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Frank Preston. I'm with the Bank of Associates. I have a few small versions of the plan here. Everybody clear? Sometimes a little one's easier to read.
Slide it over to Frank.
Oh, sorry about that. All right, this property is the residence at 712 Main Street in North Lummester, between Moreland and Tolman on the west side. And the owner, Paul Boucher, proposes to retain a minimal building lot with that residence and to convey the remainder of the lot to the property, allowing it to the rear, which is a commercial lot.
Is that his construction lot?
That's exactly right.
His construction completed.
There, he owns the, he owns the residence personally. The business owns the piece in the rear. And as a matter of fact, right now, the access to that rear piece, which has no frontage, by the way, concurrently, is. is through a driveway crossing that residential property. So that driveway will remain in use via an easement. The minimal lot with the residence has been configured to meet the needs of the buyer that's been contemplating purchasing it.
Frank, so the driveway's not gonna move?
Driveway's not gonna move. You create an easement wrapping around that existing driveway. And also, there's a newly constructed driveway on the north side of the house. That driveway that you see there is new. Yeah, that's, that's exactly the right.
I understand.
You just built that to.
That's a solo. It's part of the solo.
Yes. And that way, the buyer won't have to be entangled with the construction traffic on the other driveway.
Is there any way that he can move that driveway into the parcel A?
Well, he could. Could be done. Uh, it was felt that it's perfectly good driveway, leave it where it is, you put an easement there.
Okay.
Would that encroach on its frontage, Frank, on Main Street? It would?
Well, it does. It is.
Do we need the frontage?
It really does, yeah.
What do we got for frontage right now?
Well, keep in mind, keep in mind, that's designated, not a building lot.
Oh, I got you, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you want it to, you can sell it to the neighbor on the left.
Right, right, yep.
Yeah.
It does, it doesn't make an ideal situation, but it does clean things up a bit.
So is he gonna put vehicles down at the bottom of the parcel next to the abutis?
I don't know what, uh.
Must have, all of his stuff is up in here.
Yeah, actually.
Because this is all paved up in here.
Yeah, he's got, he's got.
No, I think he's got this.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just wondering, you know, if, if, if this is being conveyed to what he's presently got. And let's say he starts bringing equipment down, you know, to the body back here, now he's, he's abutting people.
Well, I, I do believe, though, that would be considered an accessory use to his business. Might not be able to do that in Residence A. His grandfather, of course, in the back, does an existing business. Again, I, I think it's, it's a, it's a fine point possibly, but I'm not entirely sure he could get away with parking vehicles in there as an accessory used to a business.
But it, but, but it could happen, right?
I couldn't rule it out.
Right, and, and then, and he could say, well, you know, it's part of my parcel, sort of like, I know a situation like this up on Union Street, where all the construction vehicles are parked in the back, um, and then they kept acquiring land and parking more.
Yeah, I don't think that, um, I don't think, I don't think he's pressed for space back there.
Yeah. No, I know he's got a lot of space here. I'm just concerned with, you know, all of a sudden, you know, business is real good, and we start, start piling more equipment down here, or building materials here.
Actually, he could have done that already.
Yeah, he could have done that here.
He owned that, he owned that land all along. He could have done that anyway, so. Because especially he had the sidewalk, you know, just to the left of the sidewalk. So everything has been in the back.
I know that.
Well, I don't.
So it's certainly a non-conforming lot, because you only have the thirty-nine feet of frontage.
Well, he, again, it's, it's, he's allowed to sell a piece of land to his neighbor, as long as he doesn't create a zoning problem with the residence.
Yeah, but he's good on that.
And I believe that that's entirely consistent with standard practice, which is to designate it not a building lot.
Yes.
The building, the lot in back, there's no frontage now at all.
I know, it's already a non-conforming. But this parcel A is not, is a, not to be considered a building lot, but when it gets conveyed to this owner, it's still not, it's still not a conforming lot.
Still, still not conforming, yeah. There's certainly limits what he could do back there.
Well, he's keeping it, oh, no, he's not, okay, there you go.
He does.
Enough frontage, yeah.
So, so what happens?
He basically sets out, see this.
Not a building lot, because really, it could be a building, he could build on it based on the other part.
He can augment that lot, anyway. He can't, which, which, what he's doing, what he can't do, I believe, is reduce it.
Right.
Doesn't he have some frontage over here on the street?
Not right now.
No.
He'd have to tear down the other house, residential house. Then he could do a lot of.
Look at the locusts on the left.
Yeah, the locust shows the.
Really, property is, it doesn't come close enough to, all those houses, because there was an issue back a couple years ago with the people on Moreland Street.
The only frontage, he has zero frontage, actually, in the back. This will provide him a little bit of frontage. And again, it's, uh, it's, uh, it recognizes an existing situation where the access is already there.
Okay, lot one is, is compliant, okay. At twenty-three thousand. Okay, well, I'm not, uh.
I know, I'm not.
It's truly an A and I, I'm wrong. I just.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, uh, again, it's, uh, it's permitted to take a non-buildable piece designated as such, and sell it to an abuter, which is what he's doing.
Okay.
I have the building inspector look at this as well.
Where is he?
When, our decision is whether this needs to be considered under subdivision control law or not. So from that perspective, this doesn't meet for subdivision control, so, you know, whether, now, what, how it affects their capability of getting both building permits in the future for, if they expand the use or try to put another building back there, you know, it's still a non-conforming lot. So they're limited in that capacity.
Right.
That's right. I mean, his limitations are, will remain in place. He doesn't have carte blanche to do what he wants back there, I don't believe. And this won't, this won't improve his flexibility, really.
It's just gonna separate it out, because.
Separates out the residence with a stone driveway.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion, in honor?
I move we recommend.
A motion to endorse.
I have a motion to endorse. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion to endorse with a second. Any further discussion? Here, none, or call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Polls say no?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Weird.
It is weird.
It's weird. Guess we've seen weird.
I've seen weird. All the easy ones have been used up.
Frank, that was.
Well, you could have made that easy. You could have made it easy.
I'll sell Carol. I'm always, I'm always.
I mean, he's got, he's got another plan, but you know what? Do the whole plan all at once. I think, this was all one lot, right? Pink and green?
Yeah, uh, no, it's not.
It was, though.
Well, oh, I'm sorry, the pink and green.
Originally.
Yeah.
It was all one lot, because the dog goes on the house.
That's right.
And he, and this guy's, I don't want to rehash this, but this guy's acquiring the green, correct?
Mm-hmm.
I, I think this would have been better, but there's a reason he wants this little sliver here. And I think it's because eventually he wants to buy this, which is perfectly fine, but.
Well, he owns it all. It's all one.
Well, then.
He's selling the corporations.
Yeah, well, then that's even worse for me, but.
No, it's, it's, uh.
But he wants, he wants, well, still, that's still my point, that he wants to acquire this at some point.
If he is, I'm not personally aware of it.
I don't know, I mean, what, I, what's the benefit of his madness? Like, he owns it all.
But if he does, and he's gonna build on it, it's gonna come to fruition.
Then he'd have to come back, and he'd have to get the frontage.
It's, I mean, it's poor planning. It's poor planning within the city. Because then we're creating a, a, a non-conforming lot. That, that I know.
It is, it is some, for lack of a better word, a touch of awkwardness involved in this, but, um, the landowner, Ricky, believes that he falls over the A and R provisions, and that's the, what he decided to take.
Well, it's only falling under that, because he's calling that not a building.
And, exactly, exactly.
Yeah.
That's right.
Exactly right. And again, to, to reiterate what we spoke about earlier, his wiggle room is, is quite limited in terms of what he can do back there, right now. Anyway, uh, don't waste any more of your time. Thanks so much, everybody.
Thanks.
Great holiday, everybody.
You too, Frank, thank you.
I'll have the rest to you.
Okay, thanks.
Three point four.
You don't need to.
Thirty-six and forty-six Sawyer Way, A and R. One, you got one, one there.
Tad.
Okay, so.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Edward Barry. I'm a surveyor from Apple, and I am presenting the full of the board and A and R plan, where we are proposing to convey a piece of land from the property located at thirty-six Sawyer Way to the property located at forty-six Sawyer Way. The purpose of this is, there's a small part of the driveway, uh, existing paved driveway on forty-six encroaches onto, uh, the neighbor's property, and he would also like to be able to, uh, correct the garage, the proposed garage. So there's a small piece in the back, and the two families are friends, and he says, yes, I'll sell you that piece of land, so you can put up a garage, and shows where it meets the zoning, and it also corrects the, uh, encroachment of the driveway. So they're fixing a couple of items. The, the two lots, we're not affecting the frontage in any way, shape or form. We're not reducing these lots, so there are no non-conformities at all. Uh, there's plenty of room, and it's simply conveying one piece from one person to the next.
Isn't there quite a bit of a gray behind the house here?
The back.
Elevation?
Yes, these lots, entire lots go uphill, but right as you get up here, this is all level.
This is level in here, yeah. But over here, it's quite a gray. This Sawyer Way is a piece of land that Newstalk sold, right off of, uh, off of Day Street, you know, the lights, you go down right, and it's on the right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
The butts up to the golf course. Yep, yep. Area, and, um, I'll fire him up there.
I thought Sawyer Way was down by, um, Central Street.
No, that's the other.
Down by the river?
Yeah.
No.
Down by the river.
That was a good one.
So, you must have started early today.
Motion to endorse.
Yeah, pretty good. I have a motion to endorse, so I have a second.
My second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Polls say no, motion carries.
Thank you. Down by the river.
Um, Sawyer.
In the van. He was a motivational speaker.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Three point five, site plan approval for Research Drive, for lot eighty-eight, process cooling.
So we have to schedule this for a site plan?
Yeah.
Six thirty-five.
No, we're gonna need more time than that. Because you gotta go through the solar ones.
We have a six thirty-one and a six thirty-two.
Six forty?
Six forty. I have a motion for January eighth, and I said six forty.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Nope.
Here, none, or call for the vote, all in favor, say aye. Polls say no, motion carries. All business done. Uh, new business, uh, request of, uh.
Continue?
Well, this is continued, yes.
It says continued, and so I don't have to read it.
Please go on.
Communications.
Communications.
I'm sorry. So I'm, because I'm gonna write something to the city council, but we're going to say what you said earlier.
Right.
And that we're going to save this until we get additional information.
Correct, and a revised plan, per the conversation they have with John.
Can't recommend it to John.
Yep.
Something to recommend.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Communications, Slackbrook Road, covenant release for lot one.
Um, it's a little bit unusual. We received a call from an attorney, um, there's a property on Slackbrook Road that is, um, being sold, and the buyer's attorney, where did I put it? Um, they, they found that there's still a covenant in place on one of these properties. Now, this, this, um, this subdivision is at least twenty years old, and the house in question, it was built in nineteen eighty-four, happened to already be existing there. For whatever reason, based on their, um, their de-research, it shows that this lot is still under a covenant. So we put together a covenant release form. It needs to be signed by a majority of the board.
Did, uh, did they, to all, I mean, everything was finished in accordance with any other conditions? It was all reviewed by the DPW, all of that, Chris?
Yeah, it was all completed, eight, seventeen years ago.
Well, we, we asked the DPW if they, because, you know, if it's, um, it's an unexceptioned road. So a road that's twenty-something years old, usually we would have, it would be on our radar as far as repairs and that sort of thing. It's never come up. So it's, this is a new, it's a new question, and again, it's not about the, the road, and starting, just they're trying to convey the, the property.
But the interesting part is that this, this property, this lot one, was the original house. So we never, so when we released the lots, they didn't have to release this one, they released lots two, three, four, or five, so they could build houses. But there was, the house on lot one already existed.
The covenant included all the lots in the subdivision, which included lot one, which was already.
So it wasn't, so there was no action required at that, at that time.
What do we need to do now?
So we're just fixing history.
Just sign it. Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
No, we just, it's just under communication.
So this is she, got a release form? Um, John had already signed it, and then they came back and said that they needed a majority of the, um, of the board, um, and then.
Yeah, but I have, I can, okay, get it.
Well, if you read it, it says that you are, um, how do you phrase it?
Boarding member.
That you personally appeared, one of the above-named members of the planning board, and acknowledged the foregoing instrument to be the free act of deed of said planning board. So you're speaking for the group, but they need the signatures.
Okay, we're excited, so.
All right, six point two.
So we're just cleaning up some stuff from that. So just to make this legal, why don't you make a motion to release the covenant on lot one for Slackbrook? I have a motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Polls say no, motion carries. Six point two, minor modification of site plan for Brooks Pond, lot two E dash one.
Can I have a modification?
Not sure.
Do I have a representative for Mr. Hannigan?
Some parking garage.
Craig Amroll for Liberty Garage.
Want to take Craig?
Fully dog, just got called away, couldn't, couldn't make it tonight, so.
Okay.
Have any questions?
So where was the modification, Craig?
I bought a.
Bill showed it to me the other day, but I'm only seeing one of the.
It's garage, right?
Right.
Garage is a park.
It doesn't really call out the.
Yeah.
It's this, right? Right.
The modification is simply to, to adding a third, third type of garage.
If you want to, you might want to.
Just show us.
This one right here?
It's adding a third garage. Modifying the striking of parking spaces to better fit the garage.
This is a new modification.
Which one?
Yeah, where is it? This will be the third garage.
This is on the construction.
Right. This is already, yeah, right. It's just adding this one building for the garage. Did it affect the parcel in any way?
Billy's got a notation about, uh, requirements versus.
No, no, the, yeah. Yeah, this right here.
Yeah, garage bees don't count, so I didn't, I just don't love to count.
Yeah, so this is the new one? I knew it was slides. It's not, obviously, I'm here, which.
Make a motion on a minor modification.
Motion made and seconded to accept this as a minor modification. Motion made in second to accept this as a minor modification. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Now, a motion would be in order to accept the modification.
So move.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the modification. Any discussion? Here now, now call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no, motion carries. Communications, we got another letter?
Yes.
Kristin's?
So I received a letter from attorney Peter Campabasso, who's representing, uh, his client is, um, at Seventh Prospect Street. We had scheduled a public meeting for January eighth meeting. He's requesting, and I'll read it, as a follow-up to our conversation, please extend a public meeting from one eighth, twenty eighteen to, um, February fifth, twenty eighteen. Will allow further time for the file, to file the revised plans requested in a cover later letter explaining the proposed site plan more detail. They had submitted their application. We asked them to do some revisions. They haven't been able to come forward with them yet, so I was asking if we can.
That's fine.
Should I make a motion to continue it to February eighth?
Second. February eighth would be the next meeting?
It would, yep. There's only one meeting in January.
Oh, I'm sure, only one meeting in January, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, February fifth, did I say?
Yeah, no, you could say the fifth.
Okay, February fifth.
If I have it here, the next scheduled meeting is January eighth.
Yeah, but, but he's asking for the fifth.
Yeah.
Because there's not one on the.
He's supposed to be on the fifth. We're going to reschedule him, so that.
Cause we can't have one on the first, we can't have one on the fifteenth.
At six thirty.
At six thirty.
Okay.
Yes.
Motion made in second to, to reschedule. Uh, Prospect Street.
Seven Prospect.
Prospect Street. Okay, I can't remember the number. Was that five Prospect?
Seven Prospect.
Seven Prospect Street.
January eighth, February fifth, Seven Prospect Street.
At six thirty. At six thirty. Any discussion? We've had discussion. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You think that's it?
Nope, no director's report tonight.
Executant session?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Tom.
Tom.
Pay attention.
Motion adjourned?
I already did it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Polls say no? I can't even get him to adjourn right.